Good evening. Good evening, and welcome to this evening's regular meeting of the Westerville Board of Education. I'd like to ask the Treasurer to please call the roll.
Mr. Byrd?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Dr. French?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here. Thank you. Would you all please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on in the agenda this evening to Item 3, Board Meeting Minutes. This is discussion and approval of the minutes of the board meeting on November the 24th. We do not do a motion of second for minutes. It is by consensus approval. Are there any corrections, questions, comments about the minutes? I see none, Bart, so we'll proceed with those. Moving on to Item 4, which is probably why most of you are here this evening, District Highlights and Recognitions. Tonight, we have the privilege of recognizing our master teachers for the year, and I would like to ask Lisa Kuhar, who is the Coordinator of our Resident Educator Program, to come to the podium, and I'd like to ask the board members to come to the front.
In 2004, Senate Bill 2 brought standards-based reform to education through the creation of the Educator Standards Board and required this board to develop standards for teachers and principals as well as standards for professional development. The law specified that the standards for teachers must show differentiation among novice, experienced, and advanced teachers, and to define a master teacher in a manner that can be used uniformly by all districts, and to adopt criteria to use in determining whether a person is a master teacher. A master teacher strives for distinguished teaching and continued professional growth as specified by the Ohio Standards for the Teaching Profession. Master teachers are eligible to advance from a professional educator license to a senior professional license. The master teacher designation is for five years and is renewable. Teachers seeking to be named master teachers must have taught for a minimum of seven years. Candidates submit written responses and evidence samples of consistent leadership, focused collaboration, distinguished teaching, and continued professional growth, along with professional recommendations. The submissions are scored by a district-level committee of teachers and administrators using the Ohio Master Teacher Scoring Guide. To earn the designation of master teacher, candidates must earn a score of exemplary on four out of five required criteria. I'm honored to have served as the chairperson of the Westerville Master Teacher Committee the last two years, and it's my privilege to present to you the Westerville teachers who earned the designation of master teacher during the 2013-2014 school year, and I invite you to join me in congratulating them on their achievement. Natalie Bentz? Bill Britton? Chastity Goulden? Brian Shanks? And Jennifer Walpole was not able to join us tonight. Thank you.
(applause) We'll move on in our agenda this evening to Item 5, Reports on the Agenda. And this evening, we have the Facilities Master Plan Report, and I believe Jeff LaRose is going to handle this for us.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. First, let me start by expressing how deeply sorry we are for the sudden passing of Mr. Brad Weaver, one of our custodians at Wilder Elementary. Our thoughts and prayers go out to the family, friends, and coworkers of Mr. Weaver. Board Policy 7100 requires that the Facility Master Plan be prepared to assure that future considerations support educational programs in response to community needs. The master plan is presented to the board annually and includes district enrollment, enrollment by grades, and enrollment projections. This spreadsheet shows the forecasted enrollment through FY '24 by preschool, elementary, middle, and high. Last year's October total enrollment was 14,674. This year, for FY '15, we increased by 48 students to 14,722, slightly more than what was forecasted. The forecast for preschool shows maintaining our current enrollment of 263 students. Elementary and middle are on a decline. High school is forecasted to grow the next three years with a decline starting in FY ' '19. And district-wide, we are forecasting that enrollment will increase the next two years and start to decline from FY '18 through the end of the forecast in FY '24. In summary, the 10-year forecast indicates elementary enrollment peaked in FY '12, middle school peaked in FY '13, and high school is forecasted to peak in FY '18. And overall, enrollment is believed to have peaked in FY '12. By the end of the forecast in FY '24, we believe student enrollment will be at 14,236. When looking at enrollment by grade, the largest increase was in 9th grade, increasing 86 students, and the largest decline was in kindergarten, dropping by 66 students. In FY '06, we had the largest kindergarten class, and in this slide, the numbers in red show that as this group continues through the system, they will remain the largest class through 12th grade in FY '18. Looking at enrollment by school, the largest elementary increase occurred at Emerson and Hanby, a total of 74 students, as a result of restoring the 2nd grade magnet program. The largest decline was at Alcott, dropping by 83 students, followed by Robert Frost, down 47 students. Alcott has been on a decline since FY '10, when enrollment was 719. At the middle schools, the largest increase was Heritage at 39 students. The largest decline was Genoa, 27 students. In high school, the largest increase was North, 111 students, largest decline being South at 57 students. Each year, student capacities are calculated by building based on how each room is being utilized. The school building capacities are then compared to the actual enrollment as of October 10th. There are four schools shown as being over capacity: Faust, 19 students over; Blendon, 43; Heritage, 28; and Walnut, 21. This year, there are five students we overflow as compared to 61 students last year, three from Hawthorne and two from McVeigh. At our elementary schools, the average class size ranges from 20.9 at Whittier to 25.7 at Faust, Faust being the only elementary listed as overcapacity. The FY ethnicity breakdown per state classifications is white, 60.5 percent; black, 23.2; multiracial, 7.3; Hispanic, 5.6; Asian, 3 percent; American Indian, .2; and Pacific Islander, .1. The top changes from last year are Hispanic and multiracial, each up a half a percent, and our white student population is down 1.8 percent. When comparing the minority enrollment of each school to the district total, three areas are not within the 15 percent of the total district minority enrollment. Alcott's white population is 1 percent above the upper district limit at 77 percent. Hawthorne's white population is 6 percent below the district lower limit at 40 percent, and Point View's white population is 8 percent below the lower district limit at 38 percent.
Jeff, before you go on, it might be helpful, because I'm not sure all the board members are familiar with that plus or minus 15 and some of the members of the community. Would you talk just real quickly about that plus or minus 15 percent, the origins of that, and how it plays into this particular piece?
Yeah, at one time, the State Board adopted a resolution that required each school to be plus or minus 15 percent of the district overall. So that was rescinded, I believe that was 2008. It was 2008. But we do continue to track ethnicity to this model. The reason it was rescinded is because as schools were making adjustments to get to the desired result, they found out that many districts were pulling from minorities, which it was deemed unconstitutional. So they're still looking to adopt some sort of model, it just hasn't been public as of In middle schools and high schools, enrollment is within the 15 percent of total district minority enrollment. The economically disadvantaged district total, as measured by the number of students receiving a free or reduced lunch, increased 2.3 percent this year to 34.6 percent. Elementary is at 39 percent. There are eight schools over 40 percent. The elementary schools are Annhurst at 45.5, Charrington, 42.7, Huber, 61.8, Hawthorne, 65.8, and the highest, Point View, at 78.4. Two schools are on a downward trend: Annhurst down 6.7 percent over the past four years, and Whittier down 20.4 percent over the past six years. Charrington had been on a decline from FY '11 through FY '14, but increased 7.7 percent this year to 42.7 percent. The highest upward change is Emerson, up 8.5 percent, and the greatest decline is Whittier, down 3.8 percent. The highest middle schools are Walnut at 40.9 percent and Heritage at 48.3. The lowest is Genoa at 14.9, and the highest high school is South at 37.5 percent, and the lowest is Central at 25.3 percent. If we apply the 15 percent rule to free and reduced, there are five schools outside of the 15 percent of the district total: Alcott and Genoa below; Hawthorne, Huber, and Point View above. The economically disadvantaged average annual growth over the past 10 years is 2 percent. Looking back to FY '01, the highest growth occurred in FY '09, let's see, at 4.1 percent, and the lowest in FY '12 at .1 percent. We are projecting to be over 40 percent in FY '18. Special ed enrollment is down 26 students from last year. This does not include preschool or out-of-district students. The high was 1,862 in FY '12, and we have been on a decline the past three years. Limited English proficient is up 35 students from last year, the high being in FY '10, 1,332. And comparing current enrollment to our enrollment in FY '01, and that's the year prior to our building expansion program that included building Alcott, Faust, and Central, our enrollment has increased 13.3 percent. Minority student population is up 21.2 percent. The economically disadvantaged student population is up 27.9 percent. Limited English proficient up 6.9, students with disabilities up 2.9, and our total building square footage has increased 38 percent. As these student demographics increase, so does the need for additional space. As part of forecasting enrollment, we need to stay abreast of any planned residential development within the district. We have received several calls about how the reserve at Walnut Creek will affect enrollment. This is a 148-unit apartment complex located on the southeast corner of 161 and Sunberry Road. Though it is surrounded by our district, it is part of Columbus, and thus, it will not impact our enrollment. Now located just a little further south on the east side of Sunberry is Sunberry Cove, where 28 single-family homes are currently under construction in the 250 to 320 price range. Anticipated completion is spring of 2016 and would impact Wilder, Blendon, and North. And this is a site plan of the development showing the 28 home sites. The Village at Central College is on the southeast corner of Central College and Sunberry. The developer is currently going through the approval process for 71 single-family homes and 240 multi-family units. The area falls within the McVeigh, Walnut Springs, and North attendance areas. The ravines at West are located on the southeast corner of Polaris Parkway and Old Worthington Road, will consist of 540 apartments. It is in Westerville, but it is not Westerville City Schools. This is just a plan we received from the city that shows what that development will look like. Hoff Road will be extending west of North State Street, featuring 41 patio homes for ages 55 and older, as well as 138 apartments. School attendance areas are Faust, Genoa, and South. And this is a site plan showing the 41 homes south of Hoff Road and the apartments on the north side. The ravines of Westerville is located southeast of County Line and Cleveland Avenue on the west side of Hannah Walt Road. Planned are 146 single-family homes to be constructed over the next four years in the 380 to 450 price range. The homes for Phase 1 are to be available in the fall of 2015. The school attendance areas are Annhurst, Heritage, and South. And again, this is a site plan showing the development. Fisher Development withdrew their request to build 335 single-family homes on the Minerva Park Golf Course site in July. So thus, we're just going to keep a watch on this area to see what happens. There are three planned uses for the land on the northwest corner of Warner and Allery Roads, a 250-unit apartment complex, an 85 to a 100-bed assisted living facility, and a 140 condominiums to be built by Ryan Homes, starting in the 220s. School attendance areas are McVeigh, Walnut Springs, and Central. The Villas on Tusick is located west of Tusick Road between Hockspere Drive and Hillmar Drive. Forty single-family homes are to be built in the Alcott, Genoa, and South attendance area. Romanelli's and Hughes is the developer, and prices starting at 380. And that's a site plan of the homes going in. The Courtyards on Maxtown is an Epcun community on the north side of Maxtown Road, just west of Heritage Christian Church. Thirty-nine standalone condos are to be built as a 55 and older community, also within the Alcott, Genoa, and South attendance areas. And that is a site plan showing how that'll fit. And the last one that we have to report is London Crossing, located on the north side of Freeman Road, directly across from Freeman Park. Thirteen single-family homes are planned and are part of the Faust, Genoa, and Central attendance areas. And that is a site plan of the 13 homes. So, student growth from new housing is projected to add potentially 293 students over the next four to six years, and we will use this information to determine if we need to update our current student enrollment forecast.
So you did not include the 293 projection in the other projection, in the 14,000 whatever?
The 10-year forecast that was put together by Cropper &amp; Associates last year, that is based on trend activity with home permits from the municipalities. So what we would like to do is, based on this newer information, to see if this is causing the trend to be higher than what they had forecasted. So we're going to take a look at that and see. Some of it is included, don't know how much of it is. As the current five-year capital plan ends, the impact has increased our overall square footage by 48,000 square feet. Projects included: the demolition of the modular classrooms at Wilder and North, replacement of North's land lab and the transportation facility, replacement of the press boxes at North and South, the biggest one being the purchase of this property, the East One property, and the sale of the 135, 145 East Walnut properties. Last December, as part of the master plan update, we recommended Option C to the board that included using Emerson, Hanby, and Longfellow as schools of choice, and using Central College for shared service opportunities to benefit families and students. And per these recommendations, we are pleased to report that this year, we added second grades back to the magnet program at Emerson and Hanby, and next year's magnet program will restore first grades. Longfellow continues to be considered for all-day kindergarten or an expansion of our gifted program, and we are currently working with Barbara Wallace and plan to have more information to share at January's meeting when we present our capital improvement plan. And Central College is now the home of the Head Start Preschool Program for Westerville, operated by the Child Development Council of Franklin County, and serving over 60 Westerville preschoolers. The program offers half-day preschool opportunities for economically disadvantaged families. Everything's set to go, we're just waiting on when they're opening. So it should be sometime this month, as early as sometime this week. So I wish I had a picture with the kids in it, but this is just showing one of the two classrooms that is set up for the preschoolers that is being used at Central College. Some of the space utilization projects for the summer include renovation of a classroom and the media center at Walnut Springs, designed to meet the needs of the next generation of students, adding an ADA classroom at Heritage to support the needs of our special ed students. And at Central, we are working with the Touchdown Club to construct a memorial pavilion adjacent to the stadium. This project is to be funded by Central's Touchdown Club. And construction, the construction process will be very similar to the construction of the Paul Price Memorial Committee, Memorial at South's Field House. This is a picture of where we're starting, the existing media center at Walnut Springs, and this is a rendering of what we're currently designing, putting the construction documents together again for construction this summer. This is an exterior rendering of the proposed pavilion at Central. And this is an interior renovation.
Again, what is the purpose of that pavilion?
It's a memorial to those that have been supporters at Central that have passed. So there's a couple that are being discussed now by the Touchdown Club, Cindy Crowe and Kirk Jakowski. But you can see each of those panels, as more are inducted into that memorial, there's an opportunity to grow that program.
So it'll be used strictly as a memorial, not any?
It's a memorial, as well as the bumpout you see on the left side, that's designed to house the grills. So if you recall where the white tent that they have for the games, this is to replace the white tent. The bumpout is for the grills, and then again, underneath is the memorial with anticipating picnic tables for eating. There's a fireplace, as you can see. Building utilization project that we're recommending for further review include the cafe experience for middle and high school students. We would like to explore the concept of a design that has more of a student union feel. Over the years, the need for instructional space has resulted in multiple building additions, but spaces like school cafeterias have not changed. Thus, they have accommodated more students within the same space. At Point View, we would like to develop design options for the board's consideration that would include enclosing the classroom areas. We shall review additional space needs to support the expansion of our pathways program, such as the static fab lab at one of our high schools, and we are requesting that we start planning for the renovation or replacement of some of our older facilities. The Ohio School Facilities Commission recommends planning for replacement at 50 years. The average age of our schools is 47 years, nine being over 50, and four being over 80. The age ranges are 12 years at Central to 119 years at Emerson. And in addition to Point View, we would like to explore site utilization options at Central College, Longfellow, and Hawthorne. Central College and Longfellow being our smallest schools, and Hawthorne with the most available acreage, to address the need for future space to accommodate additional instructional This is instructional space at Point View that per-school administration is not meeting the needs of our students or staff. Concerns that have been raised are lack of instructional, teacher administrative, and dining space, lack of student storage, minimal natural light, students easily distracted without having classroom walls, classrooms have to operate quietly so not to disturb adjacent instructional spaces, and safety concerns when performing lockdown drills. And in January, we plan to present the capital improvements portion of our Facility Master Plan. We will present funding for the next five-year plan and how it compares to the current five-year plan. We shall share scope of work for this summer, along with project schedule. We will review all-day kindergarten options, as well as Point View's renovation options, discuss building renovation replacement program options, and present site options for Central College, Longfellow, and Hawthorne, Hawthorne again designed to support instructional program growth. So that concludes tonight's presentation. Thoughts, questions, discussion?
I'd like to say thank you. That's a big job. I mean, there's a lot of work there in preparation and planning, and the board did have this material two, three weeks ago, but it's not online yet, is it? I looked today, and I didn't think it's out there for the public to look at. Is that available to put it on?
We'll make sure, I was working on this over the weekend, so we'll make sure we get that out.
So it will happen?
Yes.
We can put it?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. That would be helpful. I think people would like to know statistics, if nothing else, to know.
Sure.
That would help. But thanks. There's so much here. I think we, as a board, need, you know, some work session or some time to talk before Mr. LaRose gets too far along, and can we schedule one of our meetings, maybe to be a work session or something?
Yes, we can.
There's a lot here, and a lot of money involved, yeah.
Here's what I'd suggest, when you look at what Jeff gave us, I'd chunk it this way. First is the enrollment data, and you can look at the trends, you can look at the projections. The takeaway for me is, if you look at enrollment, we're on this The, the takeaway for me is, if you look at enrollment, um, we're on this small decline, which even if those housing options aren't in place, two-hundred-and-ninety-four students over some number of years into that number isn't gonna be a huge effect. It may affect a particular building. But I would say that your enrollment over the next couple of years looks to be pretty stable to what it is today, right? Aside from that, the, the one feature of our, of our, uh, enrollment that is having an impact is that economically disadvantaged. If you could look at, um, students with disabilities, or you look at our limited English proficiency over the last five years, those have remained kinda steady. But if you go to the, to the economic piece, economically disadvantaged, this district from two thousand and one has grown from fewer than seven percent economically disadvantaged to thirty-five percent. And that, that is a different student body. Um, and it hasn't, uh, those demographics haven't distributed themselves across all schools evenly. So then when Jeff breaks out the data by building, you start to see those variances, like a Point View with over seventy-five percent economically disadvantaged, and, um, some, an Alcott or a Faust with much less than that. So, that's an impact on instructional program needs and, and, and helping, um, in that domain. Then when you look at building capacity, what you see is, although there's some tight spots, as that large class size comes through, effectively, as your space stands right now, you have enough space for current programming. In fact, you have some space not being used right now, but for current programming and current enrollment, although there's tight spots, overall, you're in pretty good shape.
So, is it a bubble at Faust?
The Faust phenomenon, um, the, the Faust has the decline or the up, I can't remember which one they were. They, uh, so they have, so the, the class size average in Faust is more of a function of number of teachers to those students, not the building. So when you see class size average, think total number of students, total number of teachers, okay? So that's where that one comes from. The actual numbers, um, across the whole building, that's, that, that can be different. So, if that was, you're talking about the class size number, the twenty-five, yeah. So that's a little higher than we'd like to see across the building, but then you can have a range within classrooms. You could have a classroom with twenty, you could have a classroom with twenty-seven. So, that, that one, that's a staffing, that's not a building capacity. So you have those pieces in place. Um, the, the, um, use of some of those classroom spaces that he's mentioning, I think falls into that capital piece, and programming. Because I think you've gotta read it this way. To use those spaces against current enrollment means spending dollars for using space that, under current programming, doesn't seem a high need. But are there programming needs that we wanna look at that bring value to the educational experience of our children, value to the community? Or blank spots, blind spots, weak spots in our current academic program where that space starts to make sense to bring value? When you start to look at some of our, uh, academic data, that's where we start to look at things like the value of all-day kindergarten, which also has the opportunity for being somewhat of a revenue generator, it won't cover its own costs, but a tuition-based, you can, uh, sliding-scale tuition-based all-day kindergarten program will bring in dollars, don't cover the whole cost, but does, um, chip away at that cost. Gifted is another area, when you look at our program, the number of kids we serve and how we serve them, we have some internal discussion about whether or not there's enough there yet to, to service all those kids. And so that's one of the other ideas. So, that's where we're, that's kinda the, um, uh, some of the, the takeaway points for us as we, as we look at what you have, that are gonna play into. So having the numbers, seeing the enrollment, leading to capital plan for the next five years, so Jeff knows what we wanna build, what we wanna renovate. The other piece that's in there, and I encourage you to go back and look at the presentation again, is, and, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, he's really kinda getting at some enhancement of spaces. He talks about, you saw the pictures of the cafeteria at, um, excuse me, the media center at Walnut Springs, the current one and the new one. That's about enhancing an educational space for kids, um, providing a, a, a more twenty-first century atmosphere with the tools and the kind of educational experience a kid should have in a modern-day library, right? And that's what he's looking at there and saying, what's the impact on students there and what does that might mean across the board? He mentioned cafeterias, which oftentimes get used as educational spaces as well, right? Study hall.
Sure.
Okay? Or just the human experience of eating lunch with four hundred other students at the same time, right? Go watch a lunch at a high school or middle school on any given day, look at the environment and think about that interaction. I think these are some areas where we're looking at, how, how might that play into our long-range plans, uh, down the path? So, that's kinda the, the, the runway we're getting towards as we go towards capital plan. Now, the big thing in the capital plan, of course, would be the budget side of that. What does that look like? Um, so, yeah, we wanted you to have that data, uh, ahead of time, so you could, you can drill down and see some of those. He pulled some of the highlights. I gave you a long-winded scenario of summary of Jeff's presentation, but that's kinda the way we've looked at it, and, um, and I encourage you to pull it out, ask us questions. The capital improvement plan is slated for the January, second January meeting. So, questions, we'll be happy to take them.
Uh, just a couple. I wanna echo, uh, Carol. I, I just really appreciate the massive amount of work that you and your team, I know it's team, do. And, uh, I, I really wanna say thank you for opening up with, uh, some compassion about, Mr. Weaver. I, I just think that's important.
Thank you.
Um, and I, a couple of quick questions. They're gonna seem disparate and not connected, but here they're connected, so just go with it. Which was the school that has the largest acreage available?
Hawthorne.
Hawthorne? Thank you. And you said that, um, we are nearing forty percent, uh, I think it was like thirty-eight, thirty-nine percent.
Free and reduced.
Economic disadvantaged, free and reduced. And the, and the way you said it, I, I, uh, that's based on the number of students who receive or who are eligible for free and reduced?
Well, they may be eligible, but if they're not sharing that information with us, that's not captured. So it's those that have.
Thank you. That, that I.
So one, one thing that we've noticed is, at the elementary level, it's thirty-nine percent.
That's where I'm going, okay.
Yeah.
No, 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 I, I, I just, I, I want, and maybe you all already thought of this. As you get older, you're less likely to self-identify.
Correct.
And we saw that in the numbers, I mean, it's, it's an obvious thing, but when we say that we have forty percent at this point in time, my statement is that, um, that I suspect that it is perhaps a little higher than that. And my question, Jeff, is, from just your experience, what is that, what are the implications of that for a school district historically? Is there a certain percentage that you hit, and then you say, now it's really going to start impacting you? Or is that not the case? Do you, is, the question makes sense? You understand what I'm, just, I'm just curious.
You, you want me to take that one?
You wanna take it?
There may need to be precedent for that question.
There, there is, and I don't steal this 'cause Jeff doesn't know, we've had conversations, but, um, he, uh, he builds, I teach, is that maybe the? So, and Jeff, to his credit, as someone who manages the operations side and facility side, has a wonderful talent for understanding what goes on in classrooms, so I don't wanna diminish that. And he'll talk about research that looks at forty percent as that kinda tipping point for effect on performance. I don't like getting stuck in that because it implies that it's a cause and effect, and it is not. I think the implications for us, and we already know this, if you ask any cla, any of our classroom teachers, they know this, the, the impact in that is it really, um, it really means we gotta hone our practice and be, uh, very effective and very efficient about how we go about delivering instruction. And we're blessed, as you saw, with several master teachers today, with a teaching staff who gets it. When you look at our performance, so let's look at that. Said the demographics changed from two thousand and one of less than seven percent economically disadvantaged to approaching forty. Yet if you look at our report card results, overall, there's sore spots in there, yes, but overall, we really haven't, uh, fluctuated much in our performance. If anything, we've gotten a little bit better each year on our performance. Performance index would be a good measure of that one, um, indicators. We have work to do in gap closure. Most of that is with LEP, Eliminated English Proficient, and, um, students with disabilities. That's where our biggest gaps are. We have smaller gaps, gaps nonetheless, with economically disadvantaged in some of our already, other subgroups. So, it adds pressure to the system, and it means we really have to be honed in and focused. So, our teaching and learning roadmap that we listened to recently, I think a big, big part of that was student-centered instruction. That's the kind of approach we need to have in order to meet the needs of more kids who are coming from situations in which, um, we gotta move them faster. Value-added data, our progress, our growth data, is another indicator of how we're doing with those students. That's where we had an A on our last report card, um, and we've done very well with some of those students. So, that's the pressure point, and it means we gotta be sharp in order to, um, continue to meet kids' needs. And the other end of that is, that's the input, and the other end is, the output is the measuring stick that we keep chasing, that keeps getting moved, and our performance that we have to do. So, it's, it's, it's quite the dynamic. But like I said, you know, we saw six or seven teachers tonight, master teachers, we have, uh, a very talented staff, very committed principals, families that want their best for their kids. This is part of that programming question, goes back to, okay, where are you gonna put your resources? What, what's, what's the population?
Yeah, and I, and I, and I, whether it's a, uh, you know, whether it's an actual tipping point, or it's anecdotal, or whether there's really statistics behind data underneath it, my, my thinking is that if in fact it is a, uh, it is a significant measure, then that will help us, I think, look at, uh, down the road, not just facility land use options, but actual, just like on-the-ground programming options, where, where can we best serve these kids at the beginning of this journey, you know? What are the options and choices that we can lay out for, for, uh, I don't think it's a generalization, for economically disadvantaged, um, family systems, so that we can help them become successful?
It, the early literacy piece, early intervention piece, early grade-level intervention piece is a huge one, and that's why you've heard me talk about, um, all-day kindergarten as an option for us. I, I'll give you another set of data, and this is a smaller, something that we watched in the other day. One of our elementary schools was presenting their work on third-grade reading guarantee, and, uh, they're monitoring of those kids' progress on those reading intervention plans that they're required to have. And the interesting thing was that, as they reported out the data, they reported that twenty-five percent of the students that, uh, that came to them this year, of, of the students who ended up on reading intervention plans this year at that school, twenty-five percent of them weren't with us last year. That's the mobility factor, right? So, that's, that's another variable in this equation about what's the best thing to do. Early intervention, younger grades, literacy, both math and, and, and word literacy, as I would put it, are critical to, to success moving on.
Thank you, thank you. Very helpful.
So, just a couple of things come to mind, going through the numbers. The analysis, predictive analysis is problematic. It's complex, it's, it's difficult. Um, I think that, for a long time, a lot of focus at the board and the community level has been on quantitative analysis, which is relatively easy, right? What's the number? What's the number gonna be next year? What's the number after that? We draw a curve, right, and there we go. But even with the quantitative analysis, I'm, I'm a little concerned about some of the terminologies we use. And basically, if I looked at the numbers, we're trending, if you add the two-ninety-three, you don't add the two-ninety-three, we're basically trending between one and three percent, either above or below. So I'd agree with you. That's stabilization, right? If we talk to our colleagues in, in city government, they'll agree with us. We're, we're, we're approaching that point of being landlocked, right, from a developmental standpoint. You know, so, w, we need to ask ourselves, from a qualitative analysis standpoint, are our facilities, are our services, are our programs located where our students are? All right? I think, you know, the, the glaring example of this is, is the lack of a middle school in the southern end of the district. This is a huge, continuous problem that generates additional problems, you know, further down the line, and has done so for this school district for a long time. I, I think that we have the facilities, we have the property, we don't need to, you know, be exploring other options. We need to look at, are we purposing and repurposing our facilities and our current properties in a way that's servicing the student population based upon where student concentrations reside today? So, you know, I understand it's a very operational mindset to be looking at it, but, um, I, I don't think that we can really deliver, uh, you know, home runs on the curriculum and the program if we're continuing to struggle with some of the structural issues that, you know, we now, as a board, have an opportunity to, uh, address and take a look at. And, and hopefully, you know, again, model it based upon the fact that we have reached a stable student population. That's a good thing. If you look at those numbers, in single digits, we would have to see a mass exodus of eight-hundred families, or a mass introduction of eight-hundred families, in order to swing into the double-digit change category, either way. That's not gonna happen. We're not going to see a huge, uh, outflow or inflow like that, you know, over the next several years. So this gives us a great platform for the next multi-year plan. I agree with you, Dr. French, this is an opportunity for us to take advantage of that, because I think that we need to be very planful about it. But, how those, you know, other factors and how those different variables factor into the equations, um, I, I think that's going to be a topic for a, a lot of conversation, because I don't expect it to be a non-complex, um, exercise for us to try and, and look in that crystal ball and, and see what it's gonna look like out of the next five, ten, and fifteen years.
Jeff, can you go back to the Point View picture real quick? 'Cause I think that kinda highlights what you're getting at.
Does that, yeah.
So, here's a building, two-hundred-and-sixty-so students. If you look on his enrollment capacity, they're fine, right? That's seventy-five percent free and reduced lunch, that's the highest, highest free and reduced lunch building, right? Look at that space without the walls, very popular in the seventies.
Remember, yeah, I was gonna say, remember that, it used to be the greatest thing.
Completely messed up my elementary years for me, 'cause I was one of those kids that that would've, I'm an adult, that would drive me. So we've had conversations dating back to last year with the staff and parents there about that space and starting to look at it, and the appropriateness of that space for those kids that attend there, whether or not that's the right thing. So, that's the kinda question that's on the table, that qualitative versus quantitative. Quantitative says, don't need to do anything with it. Qualitative says, I'm not so sure that's the best way for those kids to be educated, um, in that space and to support those teachers. So, um.
Another thing we need, we need to look at, and, and yes, even with the flat-lined enrollment, going back and look at the uses of those spaces, um, over the years, we've taken a lot of storage pa, space and converted that to instructional space. And as we've looked at the schematic drawing for laying out classrooms in this facility as-is, you're looking at classroom sizes anywhere to five, six-hundred square feet, which OSFC's recommendation is nine-hundred. So there's a disparity in classroom size, but we're saying, one size will fit all. So we're just using the methodology of twenty-five students in a classroom regardless of size. So I think we need to go back and revisit that, places like Point View being an example.
Tracy, anything you'd like to say?
Um, no, I'm just, I'm glad we're looking at Point View. After spending some time in there, it absolutely needs to be addressed, so.
Thank you.
I wanna piggyback on that. We, I, I know that we all have, uh, had the opportunity to, at Point View, we need to take action. It, it's just that simple. It's very clear, it's a school design that aged, you know, out and past, you know, curriculum, and, you know, it's a design that is no longer, uh, you know, relevant within the educational sphere. Um, it wasn't relevant probably, you know, the year after, you know, the, that theory was promoted. We need to do something about it, right? And I think that we're, uh, we're resolved to that collectively. I don't mean to speak for the board, but, um, you know, again, if you walk through this building, and then we think about it again, when we look at those qualitative measures, we look at everything that's being put on us from a performance standpoint, park, all these types of issues, we can't even figure out how to configure the space, space to be able to accommodate those demands, not just the student needs, not just the community and parent needs, but, you know, the. and parent needs, but, you know, the state government's needs as well in this space, right? So I like your, your point. Quantitatively, it would look like there's not much you need to do there. Qualitatively, it looks like there's a lot that we need to do there.
There is, I concur with what's been said. There's a, a lot of research, there's a lot of knowledge that tells us that children who are in poverty or near poverty need qualitatively different instructional programming and different approaches to instruction. The issues of mobility are huge and have a significant impact, not only on that particular student, but on the classrooms in which they flow in and out of. And also, there are issues as regards the family resources that are available to the students, and there are issues as regards early development. So when we look at the need to examine all-day kindergarten and what options we may be able to develop with all-day kindergarten, that is very important to do, just as it's extraordinarily important for us to continue to beef up our relationships and our alignment with pre-K, especially when we look at the pre-K programs that serve economically disadvantaged students. Westerville has become a very remarkable success story, you know? We gripe about the way the state analyzes some of its data and so forth, but if you look over the last decade and a half of the change in student population here, and you look at the maintenance of very high standards and high-reaching of those standards, you can say pretty unequivocally that there is significant success going on here as regards instruction. But we do have some problems, well, opportunities, as we look at our facilities. When we look at changing Point View, I think many of us, as we have been in there, have felt the almost oppressive need to do something, and to do something sooner rather than later. That's clearly on, on the discussion block. Also, as we look at how to most effectively utilize the facilities that we're not using at this point, that's another big deal. I would point out that one of the slides that you put up about option C that was determined in December of last year, where it said what would go on in those buildings, that was an option for discussion at that point. We're still talking about what's going on in Longfellow and Central College, so don't everyone run out and say, you know exactly what's going to happen to Longfellow at this point in time. We'll still be doing some talking. I think that, Carol, your idea about a session focused on the facilities, facilities planning and where those things are going, I think that we do need to schedule another meeting for that. So let's talk about how we might do that very early in the new year, in conjunction with the report at the second meeting in January. Also, I would ask the board, before we ever get to that, to be thinking of a couple of things. One in particular, the capital improvements budget is woefully insufficient for the things that we're talking about doing. And that has happened over the course of the last few years, as some decisions were made regarding how capital improvements would be funded. We're going to need to take a very close look at the dollars that are available for capital improvements. We're going to have to identify any ways that we can adjust that make sense to the capital improvements budget. One thing that I do want to ask people to take a look at, and Dr. Kellogg and Bart, I'd like you to look and see how this would impact things. It would not solve the problem, but it would provide at least some extra. A number of years ago now, we moved the purchase of curricular materials, textbooks and so forth, out of the general fund into the capital improvements fund. That was done at that time because the capital improvements fund offered us the better ability to pay for them. And the general fund at that time did not offer us that ability to pay. Things have shifted a bit now, wherein the capital improvements fund can no longer support placing textbooks and those curricular materials in the capital improvements bucket. So I'd like to take a look, ask you to please take a look, see what assistance that might be able to provide. As I say, we know upfront, right off the bat, before we ever even talk about it, it won't be enough to do what needs to be done, but it can provide a shift in funding allocations, if you will, as regards those materials. So there are a number of things to look at, there are a number of things that we need to do, some of them we know immediately what we need to do, and you've begun laying those out. Others will require us to have additional discussions around what sort of programmatic changes we wish, we wish to engage in. And that is on us immediately when we come into the new year, to begin those discussions and make those decisions. Any additional comments?
But shifting the money, it's still going to, you know, it's not saving us money unless it's.
No, it's just moving it, yeah.
Yeah, I understand that. It's like, what pocket do you want to take it out of? You know, but, so we're going to have to look at that, too, you know? I thought we had maybe cut back a little because of the Chromebooks now that we weren't spending maybe, I don't know, as much on books and so on.
The world, I think the future world of instructional materials, so under the permanent improvement dollars capital, it fits a certain definition, and if I get it wrong, Bart, correct me, but I think it's $500 in five-year longevity is the general descriptor. So if you buy a textbook, right, and that's going to last five years, and you buy, that fits. But when you start talking about a future of digital curriculum, online subscriptions, devices like this, what we're starting to find is, what, not only what is being produced in the marketplace for instructional materials, but where we think it's going, doesn't fit well under the current definition. And so the idea of moving it from, as I put it, that bank account to this bank account, from the capital permanent improvement dollars to the general fund, also means we have a little more latitude in terms of the kinds of things we want to start purchasing, and I think offers opportunities down the line for a different model that, that has potential for cost savings. I can share, for example, Hilliard City Schools is now working with their teachers and paying them to create digital curriculum. So imagine, not too hard to do, we could work with a group of Algebra I math teachers to put together, pay them outside the school day to work on putting digital curriculum together rather than buying traditional Algebra I textbooks. I don't think an Algebra I textbook is that hard to put together. It's pretty simple, right? It's problem sets and instruction, so there's opportunities down the line, you start thinking about what that world might look like. I'm not saying that's where we're going to be, but if you think futuristic, yeah, I think you'd have to keep an eye on the future.
It makes sense to not have it in, in the construction, you know, in the capital improvement. I've always questioned that anyway, so I think that makes sense, that part. But beyond that, what you're talking about, I don't know.
Move and finding, move and finding ways to, the charge, the charge should be the best instructional materials in the hands of our teachers that we can put there. That should be the charge. And, and I think there's greater latitude by changing where we take it from and thinking futuristic about what our kids will need and what our teachers can use, and I think there is an opportunity there.
Let me, one last question with Mr. LaRose. 60 students are going to be coming to Central College, and they're not there yet, right?
Correct. They've, they're signed up, they're enrolled, they just recently got the licensure that, that was needed to operate at that facility. We have occupancy, so everything's ready to go. Staff is hired, just a matter of starting.
Okay, thanks. I just, yeah, all right, thanks.
Thank you, Jeff. Moving on to item six on the agenda, this is the first portion of public comment. Public comment, at this point in the agenda, is reserved for items that are on the agenda this evening. That said, there is no one signed up to speak this evening for the first portion of public comment. Moving on to item seven, financials, there are no financial reports on the agenda this evening, so we move to item eight. And item eight is the personnel consent agenda, and we do have items under this, of course. Could I have a motion on the consent agenda, please? Thank you, and a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, Gary?
Madam President, Board of Education, I'd like to draw your attention to the consent agenda tonight. There are eight sections of the personnel consent agenda, and there are 54 persons that require board action tonight. In section 8.01, there are four classified resignations. In 8.02, there's a resignation of the middle school athletic director. In section 8.03, there are nine retirements, including Amy Miller, the principal of McVeigh. And, you know, just a side comment here, if you remember back late September, early October, when we presented staffing to the Board of Education, and we shared with you that we could have 152 people, licensed staff members retire this year. I mean, there are nine listed here tonight. We have 13 others that we are processing in our office, and when I say processing, we're working with them to confirm retirement dates, last day of work, and some questions about insurance. So those will appear in January, as soon as we get those confirmed. But we're starting to see those flow, and I happened to be in a meeting about student teachers today, and some folks from Hilliard were there. They've received 45 retirements already.
Oh.
And so we'll have to monitor that as we go through the year. In section 8.04, there are three changes of assignment. Section 8.05, there are 14 contractual changes. A number of these, they're listed, are health aids and changes in hours due to students, student enrollment, also contractual language and negotiated agreements. So that's why you see a number of those being adjusted. Also, there are some adjustments to bus routes and the bid process and transportation there. 8.06, there are two leave of absences, and the two employees have submitted adjusted or amended dates for us in the human resource office. 8.07, there are six classified employments. And in the last section, 8.08, there are licensed employments, there's a school nurse, homebound tutor that we have added to the list, and when we say added to the list, that's a person that we can utilize as a homebound tutor as the need arises. Ticket takers, coaches, and there's a salary adjustment at the end of that section, a correction of calculation. So with that, I would recommend those items for board approval.
I hear none.
Thank you.
Mr. Valardo?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Burden?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes, the consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to item nine, policy consent, there's nothing listed. There's also nothing listed under item 10 for old business. Item 11, recommended action, new business this evening. We do have the first reading on a policy revision. This does not, because it's new business, this does not require a motion and a second at this point in time. I see Scott Reeves at the podium.
Good evening. The Ohio Revised Code allows a provision that provides flexibility to the graduation requirements by allowing qualifying students the option to waive the requirement to complete one-half credit of PE. The language recommendation for board policy 5460 is brief and is as follows. Students who have participated in interscholastic athletics, marching band, or cheerleading for at least two full seasons as identified in the course description guide, extracurricular code of conduct while enrolled in grades nine through 12, and as documented by the activities director, may be excused from the high school physical education requirement. Students electing such an excuse shall complete one-half unit of at least 60 hours of instruction in another course of study, which is designated by the board as meeting the high school curriculum requirements.
Questions, comments?
So what if a freshman this year took summer gym going forward? How will this impact them?
Moving forward, at the point the board enacts the policy, which would be the recommendation to begin next school year, you cannot retroactive anything that you have done. So beginning with the 15, 16 school year, a student would need to complete two full seasons of athletics, band, cheerleading, to waive their PE requirement. So if they've completed one or two this year, it would not count for that. As well, if they completed, if it's a freshman this year that completed one PE and only have one PE remaining, the law does not allow you to divide it up. They would still need two full seasons to waive the PE requirement. And they would, in plain language, they would have to take, recover that half-credit in another elective area. So instead of graduating with five elective credits, they would have to graduate with five and a half elective credits, which I, in speaking informally with guidance counselors, and I don't have any percentages, their sense is of the vast majority of their students graduate with more than five credits of electives. So the initial impact, moving forward, as we're grappling with this, as you know, currently in the eighth grade, we allow high school PE credit, and that was, that was done during the cuts situation to provide flexibility for students who wanted to take other things while in high school. So we moved a section of PE I down to the eighth grade, and many students also participated in credit flex in terms of earning their PE credit. And so we met with PE teachers from the middle school, and the, the recommendation would be to revert eighth grade back to the middle school PE curriculum, which I think almost unanimously, the PE teachers at the eighth grade believed it was much more age-appropriate for that level. And the policy would still allow us to provide the flexibility for students in those qualifying categories.
I just wanted to register, you know, my happiness with us pursuing this, kind of have an interesting perspective on it. President of my marching band, Danbury Lakers, if there's any alum watching, Lakers, I love you. But I also, you know, am a certified physical fitness trainer. And watching our kids, my own personal kids, as well as their, their bandmates go through marching band this summer, as well as watching kids in cheerleading and interscholastic and club sports, I'm very happy that we're acknowledging that there is a substantial amount of physical fitness activities that are going on in these types of endeavors, and that we're acknowledging that there's a satisfaction in the requirements through that work and effort that they're doing. So I'm very happy that we're taking this step.
And I would echo that. I've often wondered how this hasn't been done years and years ago. So, because those students are getting, you know, double time, and they're spending hours in the band and, and sports and so on. So really, this is great.
And to be noted and upfront, a student in those categories can still opt and choose to take marching band. It would just be a family choice to provide a little more flexibility in a student's schedule, who is, as, as Mr. Burden, you said, receiving substantial physical fitness in other areas.
And you're saying it only is, takes two seasons?
Two full seasons, yes, ma'am. So a student coming in as a freshman next year could play freshman football for the full season, freshman basketball for the full season, and they would have met the requirement.
Thank you.
So what is the anticipated impact on the number of PE sections that we currently offer?
We looked at some of our enrollment in, in the last couple of years in our sports band and PE. And so if you did a very simplistic calculation to take the total number of students who participated in sports band and, and cheerleading, and then just cut it in half, with half being juniors and seniors, half being ninth and 10th, with ninth and 10th needing PE, however, more of our athletes are in nine and 10, because we have freshman teams, we have JV teams, and we only have one varsity team. We had about 1,700 students in year prior involved in interscholastic athletics. If you cut that in half, that's about 850, cut that in half, being grades nine and 10. And then we kind of scaled it up to say, of all the students that are available, if 100% of the students opted out of PE, that would be about four FTE worth of sections that we would not need. We've talked to people in multiple districts that have the PE waiver like us, Worthington, Pickerton, Reynoldsburg, Gehanna, and their experience is about half of that. About half of their students opt out, about half of theirs. So the opportunity that this provides us, because as a attempted cost-saving measure during our cuts, we went to online health, and we quickly discovered that that was not the best instructional method for all of our students. So whatever we may not be offering in the gymnasium will provide us an opportunity to provide more support in the health classrooms. Whatever we're not offering in the gymnasiums of the high school will allow us to provide more support for PE at the middle school level, because our PE teachers are K-12 certified. So, for example, currently, all of our sixth graders take PE, and only the eighth graders that do not take Spanish take PE. And we're only staffed for that. But we get requests quite often from students who But we get requests quite often from students who are taking Spanish, whose parents would like them to take PE as well. So this could be an opportunity to expand our PE programming at the middle school to provide more choices for those students, which we've been trying to do in the last couple of years.
You just said what I wanted to hear.
Yes. Yeah, this is not about reducing staff, reducing programming. It's about providing family choice and reallocating some of that program to provide support in areas that we're really, really looking to get.
Would this cover all of music, including orchestra?
No, just marching band.
Okay.
Only marching band. Only marching band, only cheerleading. And, and the rationale behind that is because of the physical activity that goes with band camp, marching in parades, halftime shows, the band formation practices, and the law is pretty-
And major its.
Oh, yes. And anyone involved with the marching band. As well as sports, it has to be a school-sponsored interscholastic sport. So it's the sports that we offer plus the club sports that we sponsor as a school. And we currently sponsor three of those. That's bowling, boys' volleyball, and lacrosse. Those would be included as well, as well as the traditional sports we sponsor like football and basketball.
That's, that's what I hear as, that's what I see as some of the most exciting part of this. It's awesome that they're doing some great physical work in these other venues and maybe want to take some classes instead of PE. Okay, so that may be reduced and some other opportunities. I heard you talk about health. I, I, that's very important. Yes, I think we'd all see that. And to Mr. Bird's comment, it's, it's my understanding, I apologize for this ahead of time, it's my understanding, Mr. Bird, that in Danbury, we are the highest-rated program on TV.
I'm just hoping for one or two alumni here in Westerville. That's all I'm caring about. I, I would, kind of piggybacking on, on what our board president was saying, the, I would say that it's a much more interesting pathway for me, that if a student is already engaged in activities that amount to general physical fitness, that if we are then investing the creation of additional value through health classes and nutrition classes where then you're taking all of the contributing factors to improving that physical fitness, nutrition, you know, healthy lifestyles, healthy practices, those types of things from an educational standpoint, now I think we're doing some real value add from, from a curriculum standpoint. It's kind of funny. I, I never really have understood, I didn't start thinking about this until actually being on the board, you know, participating in, in athletics, and then I can remember going to gym class.
Yeah.
Right? You know, I do two and a half hours of practice, and yet the next morning at eight-thirty in the morning, I'm on the basketball floor doing, you know, dodgeball. And, and it never quite clicked until this, this kind of conversation came up. So I like this. I like the ability for us to then leverage those, those, those teaching resources for teaching. Not saying that there isn't teaching in physical fitness, not discounting that at all, but just saying that providing that, that student and family option creates other avenues for learning, I think, so.
I have another couple of questions. Now, as we talk about a half unit, an elective, and we do know that most of our kids are well beyond what's required of them with electives, but as you consider the numbers, are you considering that we may indeed add any additional sections of electives?
Yes, we are working on other programs specifically within some of the pathways that we've been working on that provide a very focused opportunity for students that leads to a lot of the things that we've been working on. Specifically, we've worked in science with our pathways. We built math curriculum a couple of years back as the graduation changed. We did science through the Fab Lab and advanced manufacturing down at the middle school level. And the other pathway that we really haven't touched yet, which we really believe is robust and have had a lot of communication with our Chamber of Commerce, is our business pathway. And, and we're really looking to bolster that and provide opportunities. We're working on an internship opportunity with a local company now for our students. And we really think that we can provide great opportunities and alternatives for kids through that pathway, so.
This is very interesting, and I've heard both sides and people in the middle about this issue, from districts who have done it, districts that have not, and teachers who think it's a great thing, and teachers who are not of that opinion. My takeaway from what I am hearing, from what's come to play in other districts, from what you are saying at this time, is that this would allow us actually to enhance some of what we're doing at the middle school, provide additional options there, which we desperately need. It would allow us to beef up some of our additional elective options that we were trying to do.
Yes.
It provides an opportunity for our students that many have asked for as regards their ability to utilize their extracurricular activities. On the flip side, I understand that particularly at the high schools, sometimes some of the teachers are not sure that it's where they believe we should go. And so my question is, have you been out to talk to the secondary teachers, the middle school and the high school teachers, and have you gotten their opinions and input?
Yes, we have. We, two weeks ago, we brought in the middle school PE teachers, and, and I gave you some of the feedback, and they're less impacted because it does not directly impact them. They're very pleased with the possibility of going back to a middle school curriculum. They're very pleased with the possibility. We thought it was too, too soon to do it next year, but maybe the year after. Even having the flexibility creates some kind of hybrid wellness, fitness, age-appropriate, because we've lost health at the middle school level several years ago. And having a son that just came out of middle school and a daughter going in, I know how, how important understanding the, the process of that age is. So that they're very excited about that. We met with middle school teachers as well, or high school teachers, excuse me, and the tenant was a little bit different. It was more personal to them. And it was convincing that this is not devaluing what you do. What you do is still very valuable. It's providing choices and opportunities for students who get that physical fitness. But students in those categories can still take PE and can be encouraged to take PE if that fits their family choice. So we have reached out to them. We met with high school principals the end of last week and asked them kind of to do the same thing, so.
I appreciate that. I wasn't suggesting that I expected all of them to be in full agreement with it, but I did want their input to be considered as, as this was worked through. My thinking is that this, in some ways, allows us to do in a little different complexion some of the restoration work that we've been needing to do. When we dismantled health at the middle school, went to the online piece, that was very sad, and the results were not what we had hoped for. And as we have stripped out and stripped out, it's rare that we find the opportunity to find a way to move some components back in and actually provide additional opportunities for additional students. So as I'm weighing this and listening to all that is said to me about this, that is weighing heavily on my mind. But thank you very much, Scott. This will return, and so will Scott. Item number twelve, standing business, twelve point oh one, donations. Could I have a motion on this, please?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, are there comments or questions?
Thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, we, we say it every time, but, but please don't hear that as rote. When people make these kind of donations, this is so welcome, so needed, and we really, we don't speak for the board, but I'll speak for the board. We are really grateful for what you all do continually in your donations. That's given.
And as always, there's such a wide variety of assistance that's provided through, through these donations and the generosity and the thoughtfulness of people and institutions within the community. Mr. Griffith?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Valardo?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes, the donations have been approved. Moving on to twelve point oh two, this is a resolution to appoint President Pro Tem to the Board of Education for the purposes of kicking off the organizational meeting in January. Could, what we'll do is, first of all, we'll have a motion and a second, move it on to the floor. Then we'll have an amendment for the individual who either volunteers or is suggested by members of the board to serve as Pro Tem. So could I have a motion to bring this on to the floor, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Could I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. With a motion and a second, is there anyone who would like to volunteer? Basically, what it means is the President Pro Tem sits here, calls the meeting to order, and presides over the election of the President of the Board. Then the President Pro Tem gets up or stays here if he or she is elected as the President and sits in the regular seat. The newly-elected President comes along and takes over. So it's, it's not an onerous position, but you're first out of the gate, first meeting of the year.
But it might be.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'd like to nominate Mr. Valardo.
Second.
Third.
I knew nothing.
We keep you in the dark, sorry.
Do you have any thoughts on that?
Do I respond? No, Carol mentioned to me just like two minutes ago, I'm going to nominate you for this. What, what? Sure, I mean, based on that, based on that stellar description, I mean, sure. Is there, is there, is there a bump in pay, sir?
For five minutes.
But there's no reduction.
Okay.
Let's take the roll, Bart.
Bart, would you call a roll on the amendment, please?
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Valardo?
Abstain.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes. Now we have an amended motion, which is to approve Rick Valardo as the President Pro Tem at the organizational meeting. Are there additional comments or questions?
Well, my only-
That was the amendment. Now we have to vote on the resolution.
So I can vote no.
You can still vote no if you want.
Yeah, now you can.
No, I'm fine. No, that's fine. I'm honored.
Bart, would you call the roll, please?
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Bird?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Valardo?
Just say where you-
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes, Rick will be the Pro Tem. Moving on to, see, that wasn't very hard.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Moving on to item thirteen, the second portion of public comment. Second portion of public comment, comments can be for the good or are expected to be for the good of the order. Speakers are limited to five minutes. We do have two speakers signed up this evening. The first is Louise Reese.
I wasn't going to speak, I was just going to come listen, but the discussions or the presentation by Mr. LaRose brought up a couple of questions for me. When we're talking about statistics, one thing over the last six years, looking at the data that has come out on the student population, is that I'd like to encourage the district to dig a little deeper in that not all financially challenged families or children are the children that need special needs programming. As a matter of fact, I think two students just received monetary help from the IB Booster Group. So we, we have financially challenged families in all parts, in all programs. And so I, I've suggested this before, I would like to ask, it would be nice to know how that breakdown comes down, that when we're looking at forty percent or thirty-nine percent of the students, where do they fall, and what programs are they utilizing in the district the most? Because I, I think that makes a difference. The other, the other question that I have is, when I saw the development that they had planned for Central College and Sumberry Road, one of the things that they brought up was the amount of tax revenue that it would generate for the school district. And that's something that we didn't get to hear tonight in terms of, is there going to be enough tax revenue coming in to cover the cost of busing and educating the children that will be generated by each of these new developments? And so, you know, that, that's a concern to the taxpayers as well, as to whether or not we should be setting aside finances to, or anticipating an increase in expenses there. My last section note, actually two, my oldest son attended Point View, and I was very active as volunteer in that school as well on the elementary level. So I think I'm really quite aware of how difficult it can be. What, what I would like to suggest is that before we enter into a situation where remodel, rebuild, that a consideration be given to, is there another program in the district that we could more affordably place into that building? One of the issues that keeps coming up is there's statistics for Point View. And if you look at the statistics for the children that are within walking distance of that school, they're more in keeping with the rest of the district's figures. And so a lot of what's happening at Point View is part of the population that's coming in through the school alignment and busing and other issues like that. So I don't think that it's out of place to ask, that just to think outside of the box when you're talking about that school building, because in order to renovate it into individual classrooms would be probably challenging as, to get as many classrooms as you would need to make it cost-effective. So I would just like to ask that you look at programming needs that might be better met in that school building, that might make a more affordable renovation rather than just trying to turn it into a traditional building. But I, I don't know how much property they have there as well, and I don't know how much of it next door is parkland, and how much of it is actually district land. And I think that is, is my biggest concern there. But I'm hearing a lot of talk about programs. And having been through this now, and this is the second one through, and having been actively involved, I still have some concerns about what type of programming we're offering. I know that, I'm running out of time here, one of the things that also got cut back was the amount of time teachers had to get together, that was paid time to get together and meet with each other so that they could plan a fuller curriculum and do more team approach so that, you know, that English teacher was reading a book that might work with what was going on in one of the other classes. And I think that that's one of those areas that also got reduced over the years as finances got cut short. And I know it's also an area that can be taken advantage of. So it would need, you know, the right type of monitoring and management, but it seems as if our teachers need a little consideration for a little more time to do a little more team planning that would make a more meaningful experience for our students that are in their classes now.
Thank you. You still had six seconds to go. Thank you, Louise. You've raised a number of issues that I think we will be talking about, you'll see us hitting as I move into the new year. I don't have the answer on the tax revenue, but I have rarely found a development that actually pays for the amount, you know, in a straight transactional kind of thing that the tax, yeah, yeah. And what we, obviously what we look at is what is the overall benefit within the student population? What is the overall benefit to the community as a whole? But I'm not saying that this one doesn't cover those transactional costs, but the cynic in me says they never do. The second speaker is Peg Duffy.
You haven't heard from me in quite a while, and I'm sure that's a relief to a number of you. But I've been sitting back there, listening to people, and I've learned a lot, things that I'd like to share with you. I have a number of items not related, so try to follow. There's not really any link to things. First, a great misunderstanding about Longfellow. I realize you offered ideas tonight, but people do not understand that the closing of Longfellow and Central College was part of the magnet restructuring, financial and programming decision. You can't believe the number of times I heard people mutter about that as I've been sitting here at meetings. Second, what is the right test for our high school kids as they are looking for post-secondary education? I was with a mother when she received a frantic phone call from her daughter who was taking the ACT practice test at North. And the thought that crossed my mind was, are we encouraging, offering these kids options to take other tests? For example, my own experience teaching at Columbus State, are we encouraging kids to take the compass test that's used as a placement test at Columbus State? Because they might feel a sense of success, at least I'm not going to be going into a remedial course. And I think we need to encourage other options in their testing. Third, critical thinking- Third, critical thinking. We're all glad of what is happening, certainly as an English teacher, the approach of state your opinion and have three points to support it. You know, we're not talking about the old five-paragraph essay, but it's going to make things a lot better. Critical thinking was applauded briefly. Grandmother was pleased with the way the lesson was laid out, but not the statement that was given to her fourth-grade grandson. The statement was, "Teachers should be retained in five of the eight areas." At the time that this assignment was given, politically charged, totally inappropriate. Also, kids in fourth grade, if you explain this to them, they'd be thinking, "Oh dear, am I going to lose my nurse, my librarian, whatever." Concept was lovable, but in this case, implementation was a bust. We need better oversight on that. Louise, I'm going to need your five seconds. Policy governance. Read all about it in the Columbus Dispatch and what's happening in Columbus, but we've had it here. History, we've had it with policy governance. It's not anything that's new. I have attended a number of the board retreats when outside trainers have been brought in to encourage, perhaps subtly, but in other words, policy governance is the way to go. My concern is this recommendation to our new starry-eyed board members in many cases. With questions that have surfaced in the last few months at these meetings, I see, as many of you probably are aware of, indication we have issues distinguishing between policy and procedure, district policy and building procedure. This must be addressed by the board and the administration, I'm hoping you are doing that. Now, in spite of all of those things, kudos to the board. I have to say, one really great thing, the strides that have been made in approving hires, either before we're paying them, or as soon as possible after that, because sometimes I know there's a gap there, and you can't hire somebody until the first guy has retired, and we don't have a board meeting until after that, that kind of thing. But certainly, we have fewer lags in that, and that is definitely appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Peg. You didn't need her five seconds after all.
I want to thank the two speakers, I've just, and to wish everyone a relaxing, enjoyable Christmas season with family and friends. Just keep it simple. And we're all looking forward to that time off and the new year. So, how many more days of school do we have left this year yet? Is it?
I don't know, I just show up, there's a day where there's no buses on the road, and I still come to work, so.
You come up till the 24th.
You know.
Okay.
I think, I believe it's next Friday, the 19th.
Next Friday?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Did I get it right? Okay, thanks.
Some of them know.
I'll be here the following Monday, though.
Enjoy your time. Yeah, he'll be here, so we can call him soon. Thanks.
Other comments?
Yeah, I'd, just to respond to Louise's comment about the taxes, I've heard this quite a bit since joining the board, and I would really, really like there to be an avenue for us to do what I get frequently asked to do, which is, demand and force the city to not give away tax dollars. Unfortunately, that is not a right or a privilege that is extended to the school board. I do think that we have a good working relationship with the city, to be able to discuss things beforehand. I think that we've had a number of win-win situations over the last several months with the city, specifically around taxes due and taxes owed. But I don't disagree. I get very frustrated to see that there are, you know, significant givebacks or giveaways executed for certain development deals, and they're not necessarily discussed with us in granular detail, and what the consequences or impact of the school might be. That being said, I also have a tremendous amount of respect for the city, in terms of its needs to manage development and growth, which, you know, altruistically, we might think that, you know, top of mind, the very first thing that they should be thinking about is the schools, but I think that our city colleagues would say that's the school board's job. So there's definitely a, an operational valley, not a canyon, between us and the city, but I am encouraged, meeting with the city for discussions over the next few weeks, and I think that we have a good, healthy relationship with our peers in city government.
I'd, just real quickly, will echo that, that when, Jeff, you were going through the development, because I'm not as well-versed in this as I will hopefully continue to be, almost at every, every development slide, I thought, "Oh wait, is this the kind of thing where they could ask for a tax break? Oh wait, is this the kind of thing that could be?" So, I, again, it's just not an area, I'm just learning, and so, it is an important thing for us, I suppose it is, the board's role to keep this in front of the city, I suppose, in those kind of discussions. The other piece is, for me, just comments, I just, my prayer is that you just have a blessed time over the next few weeks, in whatever way that is meaningful for you.
Unless you say something about nominating me for something.
I want to express my condolences for the Weaver family, first off. Secondly, I want to say a huge, huge thank you for Partners for Education. Again, they were in the newspaper. This is a boots-on-the-ground group that really, truly is impacting our students here in Westerville, with the book bonanza, with the Point View tutoring initiative, and, thank you, amazing group. I wish Jen was still here, but she's not. Secondly, Gem Awards are coming out, and you can nominate a member, a volunteer, a teacher or staff, who consistently goes above and beyond for the students. They are due Monday, February 9th. And I think that's it. I hope everyone has a nice holiday. Thanks.
I know something else. Hall of Fame nominations are being accepted now for our outstanding alums, to be nominated to become members of the Halls of Fame. So, we have a, we have a lot of really good ones, I'm not going to tell you who I'm really pushing for to get in this year, but it's an excellent program, and please do take a minute, think about people you know who graduated from Westerville schools, and see if they might qualify for being nominated.
I think it's just, it's not central, though, correct?
It's not central yet.
Okay, because it's ten?
Next year.
Ten years to qualify?
You have to be out ten years, so there has to be a pool of alums that go on for ten years. So right now, it's only North and South.
And that's only Westerville schools, not Danbury local schools?
I'm sorry, no, no, you know, I'm sorry, but the Westerville grounds so far surpassed the Danbury, we just had to leave you guys out. So, Westerville North, Westerville South, and Westerville High.
The real Wester, that's right, yeah.
Peg, just one thing, and I'll share this with you, you know, just between us. When Columbus first went to policy governance years ago, I wrote a long article for a presentation at a conference about what a huge mistake they would find it to be. I'll share it with you. It's old and not necessarily well-written, and I always worry about sharing something written with an English professor, but I'll share it with you. This is the last meeting of December, as you can tell from everyone wishing you greetings for this particular month of wonderful holidays. We'll next come together on January 12th, and at that meeting, it's a double-decker, so you can come, you get two meetings in one. We will kick off with our organizational meeting, adjourn that, and move straight into our regular meeting, so that we take care of the business and the structure of the board, and then move into the business of the district. So, with that, could I have a motion for adjournment, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. A motion and adjournment, we'll see you at 6 o'clock, January 12th. Would you call the roll?
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Dr. French?
Yes.
Mr. Byrd?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes, we are adjourned.